Hello, everyone. I'm Jack Dawson. Today, we bring you the July 12th Committee of the Whole Meeting from Kenora. Former Mayor Dave Canfield provides insights into the restoration of rural roads using his experiences to shed light on challenges and solutions for maintaining these important routes. Additionally, council looked at the city's plans for road repair and new community amenity. Thanks for joining us on NWO Voices, Kenora.
Good morning, everybody. We'll commence the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, July 12, 2023. Item number eight, Public Information Notices, as required under by law Notice 160-2022. The public is advised of council's intention to adopt the following at its 2020... At its... Would it be July?
July 19.
July 19, 2023 meeting. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $46,688.30 for the purchase of replacement servers for the city IT asset replacement funded through IT reserves. Declare land surplus to the needs of municipality, 117 Main Street South, and sell lands. Next item on the agenda, land acknowledgement. So if we could all stand, council.
As we gather, we recognize that we're on 23 lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people, and we give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and all this love in our hearts, so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Kenora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, council. Item number B on the agenda, Declaration of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. Any member of council wishes to declare on today's agenda, and the of council Koch.
Thank you, your worship. I'll declare a conflict that's indirect on item 1.2. It relates to my spouse, who is employed by our insurance brokerage.
Thank you. From a meeting at which a member was not in attendance, seen none. Item number C, Confirmation of Previous Committee Minutes, Resolution Number One, please.
Thank you, your worship, and myself, and secondly, by council Koch, that the minutes from the last regular Committee of the Whole meeting held June 14, 2023, and Special Committee of the Whole minutes, June 16 and 22, 2023, be confirmed as written and filed.
Thank you. Any questions? Seen none. I'll call the vote then. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. D, Deputations, Presentations, none? No, sorry. Welcome, former Mayor Dave Canfield, who is going to enlighten us on rural roads today. So, floor is yours, Dave.
Well, thank you, your worship, and council, and all these unfamiliar faces sitting at the back of the room here. One of them gone four years, and a lot of things have changed. But, yeah, I come when I found out, and me and the mayor have talked different times about the copper road and some of the issues and stuff, and of course, I'm somewhat familiar with that. And the reason I figured I'd come, and then councillor Mason, we did a tour this weekend of the road past the Kelly Road, I was on Hope's Snow Road, the Kelly Road and the issues there, and similar issues that we had in 1999, only we didn't have the major problems because it was done a little bit different. So, I'm basically here to give a history lesson and hopefully some help that will assist in getting this thing back up and running fairly quickly and very, very cheaply. And so, just a little bit of history. For those that weren't here, I found, because I'm a pack rat, I did find an earthquake here. Flood assistance needed. This was Wednesday, June 30, 1999. On June 26, 1999, we had about 150 millimeters of rain within about a 12-hour period. That, at the time, some of yous will remember flooded Dingwall Motors. They lost I don't know how many vehicles. They were flooded last year. But the difference between last year, the water come up progressively. And in 1999, not much rain, basically overnight. It wiped out in Jeffrey Malik, a lot of roads. We had, at that time, exactly 24 years ago, you had 1.3 million, over $1.3 million in damage at the dollar stand, so you could probably double it today. So, this was just some of the information they dug out. Now, the only thing is, they had a picture of my younger brother in the paper. And so, anyhow, on the road, I'll try and keep it under half, now, your worship. I'm joking. But just on that, in 99, when it happened, because we hadn't really experienced anything like this, and was deemed a flood in a 100-year period, and we hadn't really experienced anything. We set up the emergency center. I declared it a state of emergency. We were still through communities at the time, of course, pretty much within a few days. And we were in a little different situation because we had the O P P chopper flying around. I was up in it on a daily basis because the Jones Road had let go. Island Lake was ready to let go. We were ready to get a lot of water down here, other than what was there. The water tables, and I know last year, there was a lot of discussion, and a lot of people said we'd never had water levels that high last year, so that's not true at all. The water level last year was almost exactly the same as it was in 99. Some people from the east end of the lake say we were two inches higher in 99. From my perspective, judging on my subject field, last year and in 99, it was pretty much the same. I mean, give or take an inch here or there, so the water table was about the same. At that time, our engineer was Damon Wells, who was quite well-versed in Jeffrey Malik, he's quite well-versed in swamps and roads being built over swamps. And so, we had a fair bit of knowledge. We had workers that also had a fair bit of knowledge in that. And because Jeffrey Malik traditionally, Millership Swamp is a good one, letting you know, on the Beggs Loop. That was dug out by a road supervisor back in the 80s. And back in the 80s, when you had disputes with neighbors, sometimes you found a way to get even, and I shouldn't say that because I don't know what this is, but he ditched it. You cannot ditch a swamp. And that's the thing with this. I did see in the report here, it goes on ditching. If you ditch that, you're going to be in serious trouble. You're going to lose it again. And he ditched it, dropped the road, and that road eventually grew back. It was impassable for a short period of time. We allowed passenger vehicles to go through it. I've no pardon me, I was not on council, I slunk before my time on council back in the year of the 80s, mid 80s. That eventually, that road did eventually, the root bed did grow back. And so, what we did at the time, or what the council did at the time, was put a little bit of material on. And then, when I come on council, 91 in Jeffrey Malik, we started building up very, very slowly. You would only do it so much, and at the same time, you would keep all the beaver dams anywhere around there, keep all the water away from the road, get to keep the water down as much as possible, so it wouldn't build up and the root bed filled itself in, and that road is fine. You can drive heavy trucks running across that. Now, you haven't been able to for a while. So, this one is basically the same. When we filled these in, we did put stuff in over in what everybody calls Sutterville in Essex Road where it was flooded. I remember paddling around on the canoe out there. I couldn't find that picture. But when we were flooded out, this end, to concentrate on this end for now, what we did when we took a look at that, and we did map out a road above, which is in the report. In fact, there's a Jeffrey Malik pager, Damon Wells' pager is still in there somewhere. And we mapped the road out in there, and then we started filling, what we did, we bought some rock from C G Edwards at the time it was at. And you might remember, it's like that kind of shale. It wasn't granite. It was almost flat. And he was trying to get rid of it. We bought it very reasonable. We built it up slowly. We put a couple feet at a time. We let the water go down a bit first, and then it might have gone down a foot at the most. We started putting the rock in, and then we just built it up slowly. We eventually put about three feet of rock right across, and then just left it, let it sit. Once the water had gone down where we could drive trucks, we put a gravel over and built it up probably another six, eight inches or so, and left it at that. We didn't put any more on there. We restricted it to passenger vehicles at the time, which is, I think, what you want to do now. And therefore, to give the road a chance to settle, to give the root bed a chance to stabilize itself. And what you've got now is basically the same thing. Two-thirds of that road is held. Last year, when they were building, of course, they're going by my place on a regular basis when they were building it up. I wish I had it gone down there earlier. Mind you, whether they would have listened to me or not, but when I see what they're doing past Kelly Road, I would have said, "You're going to lose the road. It's going down. You've got way too much weight down here." Because they probably put eight feet of material in there in total. So, when we checked it out the other day there, where it is now, the material, you got there now. There's enough material there, just by grading the material that's there. Leave that road low where it is. Grade that out to where the road is stable again, about a third of the way across. And if you try and ditch it, you're going to tear your root bed out. You're going to lose that flotation. It will come back eventually. And I would definitely recommend restricting any truck traffic, just basically passenger vehicles for this year at least, and give the road a chance to settle, see how it turns out next spring, see where the water levels are, and then you've got an opportunity here to maybe put like a bit of material in. The same thing as if you try and put a culvert. I was looking at the one area where you might want to put a culvert across. It's really not going to do anything. You're going to have to add more weight to do that. That's the water table, so it really doesn't make any difference. And the culverts on the other end are fine. They're still holding. Everything seems good down there. I've walked the road a few times. So, number one, definitely don't put any more material on it. Basically, the option that was here, if I understand it right, around 29,000 to just to move some material around, not add material, is exactly what you want to do. You do not want to ditch. You do not want to try and place culverts. And give that road a chance. The material, as they said, they were shocked when they kind of found ground here material in there. Yeah, well, we put a lot in there back in 99, and over the years, over the years, it was putting. When they first built that road, that road was built in the 40s, that part. It was just a trail through there, even though there was farms down there. It wasn't a proper road. And I don't remember that being built in the 40s, but it was built back in that era. And of course, at that time, it was built generally by the farmers and the people who lived out there under the statute of labor, when you built road to pay your taxes. And that's sort of the way things were done. And the only reason I have these history lessons is because my parents told me. But another thing, I mean, my father and his brothers and that would have known exactly. I'm not sure if that road was ever corduroy, or if they just built it slowly. They're all passed away now, or they would have been able to tell me whether it was corduroy or not. I know other fights over by Sutterville, a lot of that was corduroy road, and same as Millership Swamp. So, that's basically the long and short of it. And I definitely answer any questions, if there's any questions on it. But that's pretty much, if you want to keep the road, there's no reason not to open it, I don't believe. Is there a risk? Yeah, there's a risk. I took a risk when I got out of bed this morning. But, I mean, opening it, I think, for passenger traffic is a good thing. Grade up what's there. I showed Barb. We've talked about it there. There's lots of material there. And then just let it set itself in. Hopefully, we don't get another big rainstorm, or winterfall of snow, or it comes right up. But that's the history. That's my experience through it. And I know when we did it in 99, we were cautious. And of course, Jeffrey Malik wasn't a very flush community. Our annual budget was around $1 million, so you didn't take chances. And we were lucky because we had an engineer that had experience with these types of roads.
Any questions, council, or if council, you know?
Can I ask? I'm assuming you've read the report, the other options around moving the road. Do you have any thoughts around that?
Well, as a taxpayer, I would say no. If you'd have done it like when you were doing it, like we did back then, I believe we got 90% funding or emergency funding. It was all part of the emergency and that, you'd have done it then. I don't think there's need to move the road. I mean, when we fixed it in 99, the water, and the water's been out, again, not that high, not as high, but right up to the road base, and it hasn't gone. It's held well. The big mistake last year was the amount of material they put in on the west end of that swamp. When I went down and seen that, I'm shocked. This is going to go, and it did. I mean, I'm not happy that it was right, but I kind of thought with the weight that was put in there, it probably would, and you'll know. Maybe it won't. Maybe this stuff has settled. You don't know for sure.
Your worship, I just have a question. So, I heard that potentially it was corduroy. Like, when we drilled down to get those samples, would that, would you not get some corduroy, or would that not reveal itself, like when you were doing those warbles?
Yeah, that wasn't apparent in the report back from Stan Tech.
Yeah, and it was one that I kind of doubt it was. And I think where the mistakes get made so much is there, when you look at the bedrock coming down, and you look at where it comes down there, and you'd think, "Well, it's probably going to level out." Well, it doesn't, and our pit's a good example, which is down the road. The bedrock comes like this, notes, and just goes straight down, and just keeps on going. And so, yeah, and I didn't, that's too bad. One of my father, one of the brothers was still here. They could have told me it was corduroy. I didn't think it was. I know there was corduroy in other spots, but I didn't think that was corduroy. But I think it's flexible the way it is, and I think without a lot of money and just a slow process, and just some common sense, and don't allow trucks and that across it.
So, I'm going to relinquish the chair, Deputy. Question I have, Dave, you mentioned in your beginning of your presentation about the ditching. Because like I drove out there last year, and it was high, like the road, and then the ditches, and it was quite a slope down. When you talked about not ditching, is that just to have that just grow back in? Or something should be put in there?
No. Yeah, just to grow back in. I mean, the Millership Swamp is a really good example of how that happened. Then it just, like it did there, pushed out. It shoved out the peat out, the peat in the root bed. And root beds and that are, I mean, they're huge, and they grow fast. And that's, the Millership just left it. When he dug the ditch there, he knowingly, this guy did bush roads for years, knew that that road was going to go either going to flip or going to sink or something. And you know what? Eventually, it came back. But yeah, if you ditch it, you're going to dig up the root bed, and then you're going to have a bigger problem with the falling. There's a bigger chance that it's going to go down even more. And I don't know, was it, I believe I read in there, it was about 30 feet, about 10 meters to the bottom, to the bedrock?
In some cases, it's up to 60, 60 feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you don't want to, you don't want to dig. So, you don't need, you don't need ditches. You don't need, it's not a normal road right now. It's in a situation where it's going to take a while to root itself again and hold on.
Counselor McLeary?
I'm just curious how many people are on the line today, today's night? Eight.
Well, you have an audience.
I'm just wondering if a couple of groups.
Yeah, and the other thing, and of course, Marquory knows, and I talked to Kyle about it too, is when I retired, I told Dan, "Call me anytime," especially issues with Jeffrey Malik. And I mean, who knew this was going to happen again? It wasn't supposed to happen for another 20 years. But nobody phoned me last year. Nobody called. And maybe I should have been just a little more proactive and went and checked it out. But I was busy doing things, and that's when you retire, you're busy with what you were working. But, I mean, the same offer is here. Like, if there's an issue that comes up, and you're not sure, I mean, give me a call. And because there's a lot of history there, and especially with the G and M rules. And I mean, there's a lot of rural roads there, and a lot of them running across swamp. And so, there's a lot of issues.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
I'm going to the, you know where the next meeting is?
Yeah, I know where it is.
When does it work?
Moving on the agenda, under item number one, Corporate Services Finance and Human Resources. We have 1.1, and we have council committee work updates. So, I'll start with councillor Mason.
I have no updates on either committee.
Okay. Councillor Koch? Councillor Bernie?
We just had our, well, Northwestern Health Unit celebrated their 75th anniversary. Was it last week or a couple of years ago? I attended, as well as Marquory, of course councillor Koch was there.
Me too.
Yes, two other councillors, councillor Mason, councillor. It was really well-attended, actually. It was quite full, and it was good to be there. Other than that, the downtown biz, we still haven't met, we're hoping to meet here immediately. I've had some side conversations with some of the members just about projects that I've talked about in downtown. The downtown core one, the independently certification project, whatever you want to call it. Yeah, I brought that up a couple of times, so hopefully that's going to perhaps get some traction.
Councillor?
No update at this time.
I have not met either my councillor or either my meeting there since our last meeting.
I just, I was, I actually had down here to mention the 75th anniversary for the health unit. And it was well-attended, and there was a lot of, what I found, was a lot of people that had worked there in the past, that were back to say hi, and that, so it was kind of nice to see some of these individuals who maybe have been retired for 10, 15 years or more, and reminisce about, you know, not that this new building that they're in, but like where they used to be, and the little cubby holes and stuff, and how things have changed in public health and that. So, it was very interesting to hear their stories. The other thing I just wanted to mention was, had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to attend two graduations at the high school level, and they were very well-attended. They were back-to-back, like on, one was a Wednesday night, and the other one was Thursday. They were both down at the White Cap Pavilion, which was perfect. The one, the TA one and that, I actually had an opportunity to speak. And I talked about the history of the school board and that, because I actually worked for that particular board for a lot of years. But looking over in the crowd, and then as the students walked across the stage, the amount of, just what people are looking at for careers, and that was just amazing. You know, there was some that are going to very well-known universities in the States. There was a lot of science, which was kind of nice to see. But there was also a lot of trades people. And there was people that are either starting to apprentice, or they're going to get an apprenticeship once they've graduated. But there was a wide variety, and it was nice to see. And, you know, there are future leaders, the people that are walking across there. And I'll tell you, there was some people there. When you talk to them after, they have a focus. They have an mission. They know where they're going. And, you know, it'll be interesting to see in the future how many of those individuals, you know, pursue what they're talking about, and if they come back to Kenora, as I said, we really need you here. Anyhow, it was something that's always very nice to attempt and to see, you know, where our future lies. And I was pleasantly surprised, and thanked the educators and the school boards for what they've done with those individuals and that. But it was amazing, and big graduation classes, so that was nice to see. So, that's everything for me, unless you want to hear about some of the phone calls I've had in the last couple of weeks, but I'm sure you don't. So, we'll move on the agenda, 1.2, 2023, 2024 Insurance Renewal.
That was me. Thank you. So, the purpose of this report, this is a standard report. It's our annual renewal for our complete insurance profile. This is through the support of Westland Insurance, as well as our provider Intact Public Entities. Just a keynote, we did do a soft review of the market in terms of other comparators, just to ensure that, you know, our pricing in terms of coming back from Intact Public Insurance is the most competitive bid, and they were. So, we did not change up any providers. A more formal process, we're talking about reviewing that process on a more formal basis coming up in the next year or two. So, we do keep our eye on the market as we go forward anyway. So, this renewal does present an increase of approximately 28%, which is $155,000 from last year. This increase is largely due to the claims that we've experienced. We've had significant flooding in the area that which you're well aware of. That definitely has increased our experience rating and has adjusted the claims. Our experience is no different than anyone else, any other municipality that's happening in the region, and quite frankly, across the country. So, it is a hard market in terms of our insurance right now, and so those premiums are increasing significantly. In terms of where we stand relative to our other comparators, last year, we did market comparison with other municipalities, just to see in terms of our general liability insurance, how we were stacking up against other municipalities. We were one of the lowest cost insurance that I'm reviewing. I didn't have that information this round to see if there was a change, but I don't anticipate there being a change with the increase that we've received, given that it was under the $200,000 mark. So, what you have in front of you in the report that was attached is our complete profile, and I'm happy to answer any questions that, Mary, council may.
Councillor Granvallinham, councillor McLeary?
I remember talking about this at some point around like cybersecurity insurance, and I'm not one hundred percent sure what I read, whether it be like data compromise coverage, fraudulent transfer coverage. Was this something that we have? Have we looked into this? It doesn't seem like this is in the policy.
Yeah, so that's something that we can definitely talk about in closed session, given the sensitivity around cyber insurance. Absolutely. I'd be happy to answer that in closed session.
Okay.
I have three different questions. There was an exclusion for chemicals that the fire department may use. Do we use those? Is that something that's in there?
You know what? That is a very good question. I do have to talk with Chief Pratt. I believe those are common chemicals that are around. That was a national.
So, conventionally, what we're seeing is those chemicals leaching into the water tables, and it's creating problems for municipalities. Now, we're not insured for that. So, I would like an answer on that.
Absolutely.
One of my other questions is, this report was prepared by one brokerage. Do we shop through different, I mean, that seems to me that Intact is a company that all of them can access, the room for movement on a tendered process with the cost of the brokerage. So, why didn't we go further than this? Why did we use one company and one brokerage?
Right, good question. And so, that's something that, when we look at our community, we actually have, we're actually using both brokerages for different things. So, Standard Insurance right now has our employee health dental insurance profile. Westland has our overall property profile. That's something that will be coming up, when I talked before about that more comprehensive review. We'll be looking at brokers as well as insurance profiles. So, we right now have extensions that we're using, and haven't made a switch or haven't made a full tender yet, but that will be coming in the next year.
So, at a different, they expire at different times? Is that why? I'm not sure why.
Yeah, we had existing.
Is what we've done at that time.
No. So, this round, we were not looking at the broker. We were focusing on our insurance provider, so I P E. And when I mentioned before that we were going to do a more fulsome review, that will include not only, they'll first kick off a review of our broker, where we'll actually go to market for our broker, and then we will have them do a more comprehensive review.
Okay, okay, sort of an answer. I also, there was a section in here where there were options presented. I believe it was to do with, I can't seem to put my finger on it. I was trying to listen and scroll at the same time. It should have worked. But it didn't say which option you went with as far as coverage for, I think it was board members which included council. And there were options. I don't know which option you went with there.
Okay, I will scan the, I don't know that off the top of my head. I will scan it.
Wait, let's do it. Let's look at it. Sure, because I think it's page 32. So, it's options highlighted here, but that doesn't tell us which options were chosen or which ones are overpriced, so I'm just curious.
I will get the details before you.
So, that's three things you're coming back to me with?
Yep, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks for joining us. Okay, thanks for the votes.
Just to clarify, so then are we going to have this conversation then again in this close?
Yes.
The side of the conversation will be this close. The other items that Counselor Moncrief has asked will have to come back.
Okay.
Thank you for that. So that'll come forth at next week's council meeting. So moving on the agenda, budget amendment, IT server replacements.
So this is a request for a budget amendment for, to immediately replace the servers, which are the city's assets for obviously handling all of our data. It's imperative, we work with our service provider, Oriel Datacom, who provides the guidance on our servers and our security system. So these servers are ten-year servers, which have come to the end of life and cannot wait until twenty twenty-four. They were supported through technology that is, will no longer be supported come October. So these need to be replaced before the twenty twenty-four budget year.
Now Counselor Edel.
Can I ask why this wasn't brought up during our twenty twenty-three budget process?
So Oriel Datacom provides us the, the recommendations and the needs for the budgets and this was missed. So that is why.
Neither will be working with them in the future.
I work with them every year and I put out the budget request at the same time that our finance department puts out the budget request. So he apologized, he's missed it. So on his replacement, because it's such a ten, ten years a big long span, right? So when we were building out the capital, it was missed on the replacement and he didn't notice it. So I do apologize for that.
Oh, just Deputy Mayor, just, I have one question. I think every year we incorporate money into the reserve, like for these, for these situations, will they?
There is money going into the IT reserve. I would defer to Ryan as far as the, how much is being directed to the IT reserves. And there is an IT capital budget that is used every year. That, that amount is driven by Oriel. They identify what the needs are and that is what we build into that budget. So this is an item that he missed on the ten-year.
Yeah, I can confirm that you do transfer to that reserve annually and that's exactly what that's for.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks for that. Moving on, item one point four, section three five sevens.
Thank you. You can speak to this one. Yes. So these are our tax appeals under section three fifty-seven of the municipal act. So under this adjustment, it's a, it's a refund of two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars in property taxes. And this includes the education portion as well. These are, the applications are submitted for the following reasons. The property, it's a reclassment of the property, land has become vacant, it's becoming exempt from taxation or the land, the building or land was demolished or raised by fire. So essentially, this is a refund of these taxes. We use NPAC to assist us with this application, so we, they do have review to make sure everything is in order. I think that's, that's all I have on this one. If there's any questions.
Thank you. Next item, under item number three, engineering infrastructure, we have three point one, notice of motion report. There was notice of motion put forth a couple of months back, both possibility or the idea of a Kuwait dog park. So we have a report in front of us. Greg, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So Counselor Moncrief brought forward notice of motion in April to have a look at what the options were for creating an off-leash dog park in the community of Kuwaiten. And so our staff had a look at all of the available vacant, vacant land in the area and began shortlisting, you know, what options based on size, location, parking, you know, relative closeness to adjacent services would be suitable for an off-leash dog park. Further, they shortlisted to six locations, the Kuwaiten Rock Holes, vacant land off of Huron Street, vacant land next to the Kuwaiten Fire Hall, there's green space next to the old Kuwaiten Public Works Yard, Portage Bay Ball Diamonds and Kuwaiten Central Park. And so those six locations were toured by state staff and we completed an evaluation, which is attached to the report based on availability of onsite parking, accessibility, walkability, service availability, shade structure, terrain, identified hazards or risk factor, factors and official plan and zoning bylaw designation. And so from that evaluation, Kuwaiten Central Park was identified as the best case for an off-leash dog park. And, and so that location, it's, you know, it's approximately just under point seven hectares of green space. There's already a picnic shelter and a playground there and it also hosts the Harbors Canora Community Garden. And there's, you know, there's street parking, very easily, it's easily accessible, it's walkable from other areas. There's a grade elevation change at the south end, which, you know, makes it a little more exciting for the dogs that are running around and I guess some of their owners too. But one thing that we did come across during the, during the review was that there is a portion of Kuwaiten Central Park that is, is privately owned. And so the creation of a central park, of an off-leash dog park in that area, we just have to be considerate of that privately owned section. But otherwise, the, the space in Kuwaiten Central Park is zoned as open space in the official plan and it's perfectly suited for an off-leash dog park. So. And then, so, so the recommendation from this report is that, you know, the information is received and then as part of the upcoming budget discussions, that's an item that is decided for, for funding. Happy to take questions.
Counselor Madison, Counselor Van Bellingham, Counselor Moncrief.
Because that park is on a small, did you take into consideration how you're going to put a fence in there, or they'll hold a fence?
So, I mean, fencing, chain link fencing especially is fairly lightweight and with proper foundations, concrete foundations that go down forty-eight inches or so, shouldn't be any issue having a fence in there.
Counselor Edel.
Just proceduresually, so this will go onto the independent list for the twenty twenty core budget process. If there were something that we at some point wanted to move forward with, what is the consultation? Is there like a consultation process with the community? Because this is property that we own.
For sure. So I might, I might have to defer either to Janice or to Stace on that end. That may be something that we have to bring back if we came out to that today.
Yeah, it does need to be today.
Yeah, for sure.
It is mentioned in here somewhere about consultation.
It is, yeah.
So the hundred twenty-five thousand, is that fencing or what's the cost?
Yeah, so that includes fencing, includes amenities, garbage cans, a little bit of servicing for water. And it's based off of the costs that we, we saw from the, over by the, the Ball Diamonds off of Fifth Street. And so with some escalation built in.
Okay. So the private-y owned lot, is that a piece of a lot that's across the street or is it an independent deal? It's a surprise to me. I thought this was only by, by the municipality.
For sure, yeah.
So what, what happened there? What's, and can you fix it?
We'd have to probably talk about that in closed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll hold that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Greg. Moving on the agenda, item three point two, Coker Road Geotechnical Report Options. So we asked for this subsequent to our last meeting.
For sure.
For staff's recommendation. So Greg, I'll leave it to you to explain, please.
Sure. So this report brought forward is particularly based around, you know, the recommendation that we're making and the risk associated with the different options in the report presented by StanTech. And so, you know, I think now we've, we've seen through water level survey that the water levels at the Coker Road have stabilized approximately half a meter, point six meters below the current road elevation. And from our previous discussions with StanTech back in April, and we, we had put out a, a public notice in April at that time that we were keeping the road closed for longer because the water levels were not stable and they were too close to the road elevation. So when the water levels are quite high next to the road elevation, it creates, you know, very saturated rated material immediately below the road surface and that's what causes the road to be unstable and potential for, you know, some serious pot boiling and some rutting and potential more sinking for the road. And so now with the water level stabilized, we do have the option to proceed with opening the road. But along with that comes some monitoring by StanTech to make sure that the, that the slopes beneath the road's surface and the water levels and the drainage is still taking place and that we're not looking at, you know, an upcoming recurrence of failure based on the, the current ongoing conditions after traffic is applied. So, so that would include opening the road, subject to the ongoing monitoring by StanTech on what would probably be a monthly basis. We, the city would, our engineering group would go out and do continuous surveys approximately once a week of the adjacent water levels. Beyond that, you know, we have to do some basic maintenance. There is some grading that would need to take place. Like was mentioned in the deputation, there is a culvert that needs to, the culverts do need repairs so that water can shift from one side of the road to the other. But doing those culvert repairs wouldn't involve putting additional material on. They would just be excavated and replaced in place. I don't know. If you've seen pictures, if you've been out there, the culverts are completely bent and there's no way for water to flow through them at all. So we need to reestablish that. And then there is also some ditching that would need to take place and, but it's not, we're not talking of deep ditching alongside the road. This is surface level ditching that just allows the water to get, you know, under the road surface and then escape into Rice Bay. So that it's not sitting there saturating immediately below the road and making it unstable. So that, that's, that's the primary option. Option three, which we've recommended that we proceed with immediately. There's costs associated with that magnitude probably in the order of eighty-two hundred thousand dollars. We're currently working on pricing what that looks like, but we'd bring that back in a budget amendment because it would be money that would need to be spent this year if we want to go with immediate reopening. And then further to that, just evaluating the options of the, the soil mixing versus the realignment of the road. So the soil mixing option really is, is confined to kind of the more southwestern portion of the road. And although it would stabilize in that area, it would still leave the northeasterly portion of the road exposed to future wear and tear, future failures. And just looking at the cost compared to some of the other options, it's, it's a fairly expensive option. As far as the realignment options go, the, the forty kilometer an hour option at the one point two million dollar mark still does leave a portion of the road adjacent to the swamp. And so the thought process is really, you know, how do we provide the most consistent service level for, you know, the users of the road so that we're not dealing with ongoing closures or potential for future failure? You know, if we're going to invest the money, let's do it and make sure that it's worthwhile. And so we've, we've brought forward the recommendation to go with the fifty kilometer an hour option. It's, it's the midpoint. It takes, you know, the absolute majority of the road away from the swamp, puts it all up on top of the, the adjacent rock, the Canadian Shield and would give us the absolute most, you know, limited amount balancing the budget against, against the eighty kilometer an hour route as providing a consistent service level for road users, minimizing potential for closures and minimizing the potential for, for future failures. So, so the recommendation really is a combination of those two options. Like I mentioned, the immediate reopening would be part of this year's spend through a budget amendment. And then we would move the, the realignment option into the budget discussions as well, like we mentioned for the, for the dog park.
Counselor Koch, then Counselor Madison.
Two questions, if I may.
Sure.
The first kind of related to Dave's presentation about limiting traffic to, like residential only or whatever he said, passengers. How effective is that and how it's designed, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, there's no question that limiting the weight going across the road is, is going to benefit the longevity of the road as it is. You know, how to evaluate what the effect, the outcome might be of doing that, you know, quite difficult. You know, if that's something that we wanted to look at, it wouldn't, I mean, it's, it's.
I should clarify. I'm not saying that's our route forward. I'm asking because in the interim, that kind of is our route forward. And so if we are, I'm just wondering how impactful limiting to passengers, like I don't know what.
It's a question we could take back to StanTech. In the report that they provided, it wasn't identified as, you know, as, as something that should be implemented as part of the.
That's great. And then second is maybe more for, for Ryan and Kyle. Are there opportunities that you know of to help us offset some of the cost of this?
I'm going to throw that to him first.
If you're reflecting, if we're talking about the provincial flood claim, they're very specific in terms of bringing the road back to original condition. So, you know, the alternative options we're removing it away would not, would not be able to be claimed under their program.
Okay.
Alternatively, I'm not sure. I think we have to go back and look and see what kind of, what we have maybe in a possibly contingency or if we have some other capital that maybe is coming in under, under budget that we can shift around.
Okay, thank you.
Just to answer your question generally, Counselor Koch, constantly pushing the staff to really review what kind of funding programs are out there and, you know, this type of base infrastructure sadly is not typically what we're seeing. But, you know, I'm definitely having a conversation with the general librarian on a quarterly basis to just see what's opened up and really, we just try and pursue as many of those options.
For sure. And I thought so. It just wasn't really mentioned in here, so I hope I answered the question.
Counselor Madison and Counselor Moncrief.
I've got a couple of questions. First one is, is it really necessary for us to have FanTech do monthly inspections? Can our own staff not do them?
The instruments that are installed, the equipment that's required to take the readings off of those, the inclinometer and the vibrating piezometer are both instruments that StanTech has the equipment for and we do not. It's pretty expensive equipment. We'd have to acquire that.
Okay, and are the culverts really necessary? At this point, there's no water there.
Yeah, so like, you know, for rain events throughout the summer or as we get into water level changes and waters migrating beneath the road, giving it an easier path to transition from one side to the other minimizes the amount of actual road material that gets brought with the water when it's, when it's traveling through. So it actually will help stabilize the road by, by leaving the most material in place.
Okay, and after listening to Dave and if we repair this road and we're constantly monitoring it, is it really necessary to build a new road?
I mean, we're always going to look, so, so when the road elevation was, was built up, it was built up just under a meter in elevation and when it failed, it dropped one point four meters in elevation. And so the road is actually now lower than it was originally and so future flooding, it, it actually takes less water for the road to become flooded and could be caused for another closure. And then that also creates higher potential for closures based on road failure. So, I mean, it, it's all about, you know, how many closures are we willing to entertain? Because without realigning it, it looks like we're going to be into probably two a year based on the, the water level changes and that potential, you know, what changes with traffic traveling across it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Moncrief and Counselor Van Bellingham.
Yeah, mine is more of a comment and I should have said something during the last report. But I just want to commend the staff for these very thorough and, you know, understandable technical reports. I really appreciate them. I really appreciate them. So, thanks for all the work on this and, and...
Thanks, I'll make sure I pass that on to the team as well.
I want to echo that because I wasn't able to attend the meeting. So, being able to read that at home, I felt like I had a full understanding of, of what it was. That was me and myself. So, my, so just for my clarification, the, at council next week, we will, will we have the budget amendment at that? Or that's going to be coming?
I think that'll come in the September meeting.
Okay. And so, when we're making, so then, the report that will be coming to us will be with the recommendation for option three. And then, we will talk about things such as realignment as part of the budget process going forward, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I've given the kind of high level approximate cost that, you know, eighty to hundred thousand dollar range. So, I think the decision, I'm asking maybe you can make the decision based off of that information. And then, you know, we'll bring the, the actual formal number to you in September. And then, just like you said, add it to, add the option two, you know, two B to the budget discussions that are going to be coming in September and through, through the fall.
Okay, so in the July, sorry for keep calling back, sorry about that. So, at the July council meeting, we will be making a decision on the option three without the exact numbers attached to it. But then, in September, we will be getting the numbers.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Sorry, I think.
Yeah. So, I'm going to defer the chair to Deputy Mayor. So, couple of questions. I think you've answered that about like next week, what to expect because you wouldn't exactly know the numbers.
Right.
Does that preclude us from starting this process?
No.
After next Tuesday? Because there, it'd be nice to see something done for start right away to get this thing open and, you know, see what, what it looks like as the, as the weather patterns change throughout the season.
Right.
The other one though, for item number two, you know, when you're talking about building roads and it's, you know, I don't know what the, like where the road, where you're, where we're proposing the new road, is there, is there something that could be put in there? Like, could it be over a two-year period to build this? Like where you put materials in, let it sink or whatever, or settle? And then, you have a proper road bed instead of just building a road that, that is not stable and sinking? Because that's a lot of money to spend for, what are we talking about, four hundred meters or three hundred and, three hundred and fifty meters?
Yeah, sure. The to, the total length it will be realigned is closer to six hundred. When you, so, in the, it was the last page of StanTech's report, the three alignment options are given and there's a map that shows the different routes that it would take. And so, all of those options, we're really building directly on bedrock. And so, you know, contract administration, getting the blasting in place, and then further design, detailed design of the actual road buildup would take us, I think, across two seasons at a minimum. And so, the spend would also be split across the two seasons because it'd be work taking in place, taking place in the home.
Okay, so multiple budget years?
That's right.
Supposedly. Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Well, again, thanks very much. I echo that for thorough report. This is the information, good information we need to make hopefully good decisions. So, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, item number five, removal of holding provision. So, Heather, help me over here.
That's Janice.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get to the report in my agenda, which is way down, so.
It's Janice.
Thanks, Janice.
So, my understanding that five point one is application D fourteen twenty-one is, we're requesting to remove from the agenda? Is that not the application that Kevin and me were discussing?
That's the public meeting that's being held at twelve noon. So, the one we're speaking to right now is the removing of the holding provision from three twenty-one, First Avenue South.
The Blue Heron property?
Mm-hmm.
No, this is the one that we're like... Kevin will be here at noon to discuss the other one.
Okay.
So, my apologies for that confusion, but, so we're asking about the other from the agenda.
So, what do we need to do procedurally? Can we defer that?
Yeah, we'll just defer it.
Do you need a motion?
No.
Okay, then moving on to five point two, Janice, is that you?
This is referring to a lot that was made surplus by, by law nine twenty-three and the authorized sale to Angela Reed and Kyle Hawks. This was a decision that was made at the time of that bylaw. Staff recommended that a deeming bylaw be applied for, after the sale as a condition of purchase to be registered against the title. I'm sorry. So, what this does is simply, there, there are two lots on a plan of subdivision that are adjacent to each other. One was owned by the city, the other is privately owned. The city has deemed their lot surplus. And what we would like to do now is consolidate the two lots together so they effectively become one property instead of two separate lots. We need to do that by a deeming bylaw. And so, that's what we're asking council to move forward with that deeming bylaw that would just consolidate, when the sale is registered on title, it would be registered as a single property instead of two separate lots. And then, it could not be sold separately without planning approval.
Question, sorry, question for the council. Thanks, Janice. Five point three, declare land surplus to the needs of the municipality until lands, as we know, one one seven Main Street South.
So, this, this item, we, we discussed last week. This is the one seventeen Main Street South property. There was a, we have an offer to purchase and we're asking council to declare the land surplus so that we can authorize the sale of this property to a, a private developer. The owner, or the prospective owner is, owns other businesses in the Kenora region, specifically the Tim Hortons franchises. And they're looking to purchase this property to put in a, another restaurant, not Tim Hortons, but a pizza franchise with four residential units above. Primarily, my understanding is that these residential units would be available as, as affordable housing for staff that they might be bringing for their three property businesses that they operate. They would be open market rentals, but owned by the same people who own, own the restaurant below. So, at this time, we're asking council to declare, declare the land surplus and authorize the sale for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is, is the plus H S T, which is the purchase price that we had purchased it at for a few years ago.
Any questions at council? I, I think we had quite a discussion about this last meeting. Okay, we look forward to having that come next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeez, I can't believe this record time. Economic growth and recovery, there's no reports. We did have a public zoning amendment meeting scheduled.
We do still have the public zoning amendment meeting.
We do now?
Yeah, so that matter that was emailed to me.
Yeah.
That is the deferral of the Blue Heron is not being heard today. So, we will still have the twelve o'clock public zoning meeting.
Okay. Okay, next meeting Wednesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. It seems like such a long wait, isn't it? So, now I'll ask for resolution number two, please.
To your worship, I move resolution number two and it's seconded by Counselor Madison that pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the municipal Act two thousand and one, as amended, authorization will be provided for council to move into a closed session at ten oh one AM to discuss items pertaining to the following. Personal matters about an identifiable individual to matters, crack prevention committee appointment and employment status, education and training members of council, three matters, development, C A O, and mayor updates.
Any questions? See none, call vote then, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Public statutory meeting as per the requirements of the Planning Act for Wednesday, July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to start with land acknowledgement, so if we could all stand. Counselor Moncrief, please.
As we gather, we recognize that we're on treaty three land that's steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Kenora. Let these principles guide us in our decision-making.
Thank you, Counselor. Council declaration of key area interest in the general nature thereof. And Counselor, on today's agenda from a previous meeting, see none. From a meeting in which a member was not in attendance, see none also. Item number one, application is being considered. So, it's a zoning bylaw amendment, D fourteen dash twenty-three dash oh five. Civic address is seven twenty-five Railway Street. Registered owner, it's one nine zero eight three nine three Ontario Inc. Agent is Amber Ostrowski?
Ostrowski.
Ostrowski, okay.
Like now, turning to Rochelle.
Sorry, and, and Paul Rochelle. Yeah, Rochelle's easier than that.
Yeah, easier, right?
So...
The owner's actually wrong in that too. It's just a different number company now.
Okay.
It matters.
So, moving on, application presentation. So, do you like, do you like the floor?
Well, do you need one, or?
Well, it's entirely up to you.
I, I can't speak. I mean, basically, basically, Celine, who has the shelter now, is retiring, so it's closing one way or the other. She, she just can't do it anymore. So, we acquired the property at seven twenty-five Railway Street. It's basically, it used to be a garage. So, in the future, with the cat shelter there, there's going to be less traffic. No one's even going to know they're there. I mean, in the morning, a couple of vehicles come, at night, a couple come, feed them, clean cages, do whatever. So, so as far as the neighborhood goes, we canvassed it, everybody was in favor. We never had anybody say no except one, one lady that didn't speak English very well. She just wanted to talk to her daughters. But, yeah, you know, and I think it's great for the city because right now, all the cats go to the pound, you guys have to pay for it, the city does, and euthanasia, whatever. So, and I believe right now, there's still three at the pound that are waiting to go to the shelter. We, we just don't have room where it is right now. It's in a tiny little garage. So, at least this place gives us more room. And for the most part, you know, we need about a hundred and fifty grand a year in donations. And that all comes from local businesses and citizens. We've had lots, especially with the shelter moving, McMonin Yates Home Hardware, LMD Construction, Chow Time, there's lots of businesses are stepping up and helping. So, we just need some approval from you guys for the amendment.
Thank you, thanks, Paul. Moving on the agenda, city planner report. Kevin?
All right, yes, certainly. So, I won't repeat any of the information you've already heard. So, this is, the zoning amendment is proposed in an area that's designated as established area. And basically, as, as long as the amendment is, is a neighborhood compatible and doesn't cause any identifiable nuisances, it's supported by the official plan. But we do need the zoning by, by law amendment because the L C zone doesn't allow for shelters. Normally, shelters are only permitted in rural areas, or kennels are only permitted in rural areas because of some of the nuisance factors, generally odor and noise that one associates, especially with dogs and large animals. But that is not the case here. The planning advisory committee held a meeting last month and considered it and has recommended approval to council that it be approved. There's no other concerns that have been identified either by municipal departments or outside agencies. So, we're recommending approval, just with a, a fairly specific approval that it's a kennel for cats with it and for indoor operations just so that we don't, I'm not saying the applicants intend to do anything different than what they've stated, but just so that, you know, it's, it's a very specific situation and we want to recognize that without opening the door for, you know, for other types of kennels. So, with that, I conclude my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions of council? I mean, there's further down, we have an opportunity for that. So, just, if there are, just hold off now. So, thanks, Kevin. Item number three, public comment. Is there anybody from public who wishes to provide information? See none. Item number four, questions of council. So, is there any questions of any counselors based on the information in front of us? No? Okay. Well, is that a record? Doing well today. Item number five, closed of the public meeting. So, the meeting is to be declared closed following all the comments and questions, which it has at twelve oh five?